Okay, aloha everyone, welcome back. Where we left off was the Department of Water Services was going to give their presentation. And then we have, just as a preview, we have other federal agencies and then state agencies, and then we'll go to public testimony. Proceed.
Good afternoon. I am Ben Kudo and I represent the County of Hawaii Water Board. And to my right is Mr. Keith Okamoto, who is deputy of the Department of Water Supply for the County of Hawaii. I thank you for this opportunity to present our thoughts to you on this very important matter. I would like to echo what the mayor recited in his speech, that I think there's an appreciation on the part of all people about the National Park Service and its concerns regarding the Honocauha Park facilities and preserving what they have there. However, what the mayor also said was that just because someone wants something does not mean that they should have it if there are no grounds for having it. The desire of the National Park Service must be grounded in evidence and scientific data that is brought before this commission to satisfy the eight criteria of Chapter 174(c). We believe that thus far, and this proceeding has been going on for a year and two months, I believe, no evidence has been submitted to this commission to demonstrate that any of the eight criteria have been satisfied. Even the quorum staff in its staff report seems to indicate that that is so with regard to the threatened or alleged threatened resource that we are here to protect. I will tell you that as I reviewed this case, it was puzzling to me as to why none of the eight criteria seem to be met, both from the evidence and the scientific data thus far. And then it dawned on me that 174, the water code, was adopted to protect the resource, water. In fact, Chapter 174(c), Section 174(c) 41, which is entitled designation of a water management area, says, "When it can be reasonably determined after conducting scientific investigation and research that the water resources in the area may be threatened by existing or proposed withdrawals or diversions of water, the commission shall designate the area for the purpose of establishing administrative control." It is the protection of the water resources which is behind the water management area designation process. When I struggled to figure out why the eight criteria were not met in this case, it dawned on me that the National Park Service's petition is not about protecting the resource. It's about protecting the park, the impacts to a park. The water code was not established to address impacts. The water regulations which govern the water department and the state water controls were enacted to protect the water impacts. Water designation is to protect the resource. The National Park Service is not here asking you to protect the resource. They're asking you to protect the park. There's a big difference. I don't believe the petition therefore is appropriate to be before this commission. If we go beyond that, and let's assume that it is appropriate, which I don't think it is, the mayor struck upon what I think is the penultimate issue before us, before you. And that is whether you feel comfortable that the Department of Water Supply and the County of Hawaii is able to manage these water resources and to fulfill its public trust duties under the state constitution. If you feel that they are not, then it is your perfect right to protect the resource to impose the overlay regulation through the water management designation process. In fact, the legislature gave you all the sole power to do that. In other words, you don't need a third party to bring a petition before you to designate. It can be done by the initiation of the chairperson of your commission to do so, at any time, at any time. Therefore, we believe that unless you believe that there is mismanagement by the water department or the County of Hawaii agencies, or there is an incapability of those departments or the water department to manage the resources of the Keahoe Aquifer system, you should not designate this area. There is no basis to do that. I will submit to you that in reviewing the record over the last year and two months, there doesn't seem to be any evidence of mismanagement or incapability to manage this resource properly and to fulfill the public trust duties under the state constitution. So you have two issues before you. There is no criteria being met as to the threatened resource. The Park Service is not asking you to protect the resource. And secondly, there is no evidence to show that the county is mismanaging or irresponsible or incapable of managing this particular resource. We believe that this petition should not be before you and therefore should be dismissed. Let me address something else here. The County of Hawaii is willing and has been willing to meet with the National Park Service to discuss how we can resolve this issue of impact to their park. In fact, in November 28th of this year, the Water Board sent a letter to the National Park Service stating that the Water Board remains willing to discuss matters relating to the water needs of the county residents, but we have heard, not heard, any type of proposal from the NPS on ways to work together regarding this issue. Repeated requests for further discussions on that issue have gone unanswered by the NPS. Should the NPS be sincere in its commitment to finding a common ground on this issue, the Department of Water Supply of the County of Hawaii and the Water Board remain committed? We have made offers to sit down with them to work these out. I submit to this commission, and I disagree with the National Park Service in regard to any type of mediation. The National Park Service said they didn't want you to hover over us while any negotiations were going on. They didn't want this decision to be hinged upon the outcome of any discussions. We have just the opposite position. We think you play an important role in mediating this event and this situation, which is of critical importance. We would like this commission to withhold the decision of this petition pending negotiations between us and the National Park Service to reach an agreement on what measures we can take from the county side to allay their concerns regarding the impacts to this park. We make that offer to you and to the National Park Service. In good faith, we believe that with you involved in that process, the parties will cooperate and come to the table to seriously negotiate a settlement of this issue without having to make a very difficult decision that affects and is, in my opinion, divisive of this community. Thank you very much.
Thank you Keith, are you going to add anything? Questions for the Water Board?
Yes, I guess, Mr. Kudo, if a private property owner wants to drill a well and extract water for their project, what role does Board of Water Supply or Department of Water Supply use to protect the resource in terms of the siting of the well and the impact on adjacent wells, et cetera?
Yeah, so if I could address that, again Keith Okamoto, Deputy Department of Water Supply. So as far as if it's a development well that's going to be tied into our system, we can speak on that behalf. Not so much the private wells that are used other than that purpose. But for those that are developed for a possible development, we've narrowed it down so that hydraulically, you know, it has to work within our system if the intent is to utilize our infrastructure to get it from source to point of distribution. So that is that ban, that high-level ban, and that's where we've, you know, determined the source, possible locations. Now, it's up to the private entity to exactly determine where. They would need to find the property if they don't currently own it, propose site, possible capacity. We'll enter into some collaborative process where we talk story and say, hey, this is what it would take for you to get it from there to where you intend your development to be. And then ultimately, if things pan out, it would be some sort of agreement and depending, the specifics depend on, I guess, various factors, but that goes to our Water Board for review and approval. But they still need to come to this body if they want to drill the well, to actually drill the well.
Yeah, if it's just a private well for a private development, then what is your role in it?
Same thing. So if it's a private well, typically how our system is set up, a private well, if it's going to be for a development, would typically need to utilize our infrastructure. So that's how we get involved.
If they're not going to use your infrastructure?
Then they just need to appear before you folks.
Okay, so on those private wells, what's, how do you examine the well's effect on potential upconing and problems in relation to existing other private wells and protection of the adequacy of the resource? I'm not talking about wells that are being drilled for your system.
Okay, well, the only thing we have access to is if Seaworm staff provides us the well construction permit for us to comment on, or if there's an environmental assessment being done, and then we'll provide comments. But typically, if they're not tied into our system, we won't have typically much to offer as far as comments on those.
Okay, I was interested because in a recent submittal from the department, it stated that the DWS is responsible for the control of water resources within the Keahoe Aquifer. That the Water Board, as a governing board of DWS, has legitimate interest in Keahoe Aquifer as a purveyor and regulator of water within the County of Hawaii, and that they're entrusted with the duty to allocate, control, preserve, and provide water to the public. So I'm just wondering about your role in controlling the water resources and preserving the viability of the resources except as the county's utility company?
Yeah, so, yeah, I'm not exactly sure what the question is, but again, it's, as far as our jurisdiction, it's for the wells within our system. I believe our current pumpage is eleven and a half MGD around there, so we can't speak for all the private wells. We can speak for approximately eighty percent of them, I guess. I'm not sure if that answered your question.
Okay, just to be clear though, your kulianna extends only to your own system and the wells that are drilled to be part of your system?
Primarily.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Milton? But isn't it true that if the well is to serve a subdivision or to provide domestic water, then it does come under the purview of you and you are entitled to comment and have a say in the well development?
Yeah, that is correct. If it's tied to a subdivision action, then per-
For domestic use?
For subdivision code requirements, then yeah, we're obligated to review and approve.
So even on private wells, you do have some jurisdiction and review process?
Correct.
Thank you Milton.
Hey Keith, I think this one is for you. Can you educate me on the scope of the revised water use development plan for the Keahoe Aquifer? The timing of it and how it might help the commission deal with some of the issues around authorized plan use that we're struggling with?
Sure. I think it will provide some insight for this particular situation. The scope really is to take a look at actually two aquifer systems. I think you've heard mentioned in the past, we've narrowed it down to update those two because of certain findings from the first report. And one of them is this Keahoe Aquifer. So our consultant, Fukunaga and Associates, is currently working on it right now. We scrambled to get some preliminary findings prior to the November 19th continuation, so that's what was presented before you. We're shooting for getting a pre-final draft within the next couple of months. And we think, so what's the scope of that really is to take it from a more higher level view of the island as a whole. So now we're narrowed down into these aquifer systems. So now our consultant is going and taking that finer-tooth comb to the analysis and actually looking at what numbers, we're refining it basically, is to really see if these numbers, we're going to go down to individual areas, individual residential areas, individual industrial commercial areas, and evaluate what the consumptions are in those areas and determine, you know, what we're looking at down the road. We don't expect another NELHA to pop up. We don't expect, you know, and we do have further information with the Kona CDP. We have new possible developments with the West Hawaii University Judiciary. So we have updated information. So we felt that along with identifying this aquifer as something that needs further refinement as an appropriate update at this time.
I understand the commission staff normally provides input on your scope of work. What would be the earliest date that the commission staff could see a scope of work that they might be able to comment on?
John, this is Fukunaga and Associates. We are preparing, in fact, I think there's a draft review, I mean draft review going on right now of the project description, which would be, I guess, we're intending to submit it at the beginning of next year, probably January, February, as a, you know, to understand the scope and the methodology.
So it wouldn't be unreasonable to say the end of January, the commission staff would be able to see revised scope of work?
Yes. We've been talking with them already, so they're familiar with what we're intending to do.
Maybe this morning, this, and again, I'm not as new as Denise, but almost as new. Does the water development plan actually, to talk about the, actually the location of future wells and the siting and that type of stuff, does it get down to that level of detail?
I think it could, you know, and that's part of the discussions with the staff as far as scoping out the details. So we have a general scope with Fukunaga and Associates. They're currently refining it through discussions with Seaworm staff, is my understanding.
And then how long do you think it would take, assuming January 30th, the staff provides comments on the scope of work? And again, it's an update, it's not a total rewrite. How long do you think it would take to have final? I mean, to me, it seems like this might be a vehicle to achieve some common agreement on what's going where, but so I'm trying to work on that timetable.
Right, right. Couple of months, John?
Sure.
Well, yeah, just, just-
Yeah, well, basically, our scope of work right now is to refine and clarify perhaps some of the misconceptions that were taken out of the original water use and development plan. In fact, I have testimony prepared to discuss that, but I'm later on in the agenda. But as far as, when you look at it, the county has their own CIP development plan for their system. In other words, how they address and plan or propose their infrastructure. So there are different kinds of level of detail that I think you're referring to.
What's the timeframe of the update?
The timeframe of the update right now, we had proposed if everything goes well, we're looking at sometime in summer.
Okay, aloha, mahalo, Keith, and nice to meet you. Just a couple of questions. Keith, can you give me an example of something that was on the county plan that got, didn't get water credits in the future or was proposed and you guys denied?
Denied, let's see, well, I guess I could give you a good example is that Kaloko Makai is one that's been brought up, that large development. So they haven't come to the table with us. So as far as the department or the Water Board, they don't have commitment for water. So as far as in our eyes, they're, they wouldn't be able to proceed with their plans. I'm not sure where or how far they have gotten with other permits and/or possible approvals, but they don't have any commitments from us at this point.
That would be an example. It's on the county plan, but you guys are not going to allocate water. It's done, they're not going to get, no matter what.
Not at this point, yeah.
What's the process for, is it the board approval?
Yeah, so again, like I think was briefly discussed with Mr. Starr's question would be, you know, our system cannot accommodate a proposed development of that size and proposed water needs. So they would have to come to the table with some proposal to say, hey, this is how we anticipate providing that water for this particular development. For something like that, it would probably be a new source, at least. So we say, okay, great, you know, this is the area we're looking at, this seventeen-hundred-foot elevation, that's the parameters we're looking at right now based on the hydraulics of our system. And a sizable development would probably require storage, beefed-up transmission, distribution. Correct. And if it's that much, maybe one well is not enough. It may require redundancy because these things do break down. So we have a certain amount of availability built into our system, so we're not like running at max capacity currently. But for larger-type developments, it'll typically require some investment on the developer's part, which typically includes source development. And then, so if we spell that out for them, then they would need to talk story with the Commission on Water Resource Management and find out what the requirements are to drill a source and proceed along those lines.
Generally, it's been my experience working on these water agreements for the major resorts in North Cohala, is that the landowner developer does not want to own and operate the water system, but they have the money to make the initial investment for the source development. So they really want to work with the county water department and reach an agreement, a written agreement, whereby they fulfill all of the needs and requirements and testing requirements that the county Department of Water Supply needs to have because ultimately they want to turn the system over to the county water department to operate and own. That's not in every case, but most times that is the situation. So they are really wanting to comply with the Department of Water Supply criteria and needs to preserve that area of water resource.
Denise?
Okay, thank you Denise. Just a couple, a couple more here. So you guys mentioned managing the public trust and taking that into consideration in your allocation of the resource. How do you guys do that, or how do you define, what does the public trust mean to our county Water Board?
I guess that's a good question. It's, again, as I think was previously mentioned, I don't know if we explicitly target a particular public trust, but we realize that our service, providing domestic use, is a public trust. And that is our mission, is to provide that domestic use to the public. So that's our primary focus. Part of when we give out water commitments, our guidelines that we have within our rules and our internal guidelines is that, you know, we do evaluate, that's why we take a look at environmental assessments, making sure this is a valid project. We work with our county planning department, make sure they're on board with whatever requirements have been placed on them as far as that. But we really try to stick to our primary mission, which is providing adequate domestic use.
And what about waste and leak detection?
Okay, yeah, and if we're talking about waste, we do have a pretty robust unaccounted water program which goes beyond just leak detection. So leak detection is one component. In other words, we don't want it to be wasted and just dumped into the ground, although that does contribute high-level recharge to the basal lens, I might add. But, but that's not, that's not our primary intent to address leaks. Sorry, got off track. But, so, you know, we're kind of proud of the fact that we're one of the leaders in the state. We've had an unaccounted water program in place under former managers' guidance for over twenty years, and it also includes that communication between, you know, when a pump, when the tank level drops, it typically calls a pump to turn on. So we want to make sure that the communication is consistent and such that we're not throwing away water. So in other words, the pumps stop when the tank is full and not just keep pumping and dumping water. So we have that, as well as data loggers within the system to monitor for leaks.
Okay, great. Sorry, one last one Denise. And then if you, you know, we had a great time, we checked out the Kahaluau shaft with you guys and got to see kind of that system, so thank you for allowing us to come and to visit. Can you just talk a little more about that? I'm trying to recall from our, we've been meeting on several occasions, and there were several basal lenses that had relatively high levels of chlorides, and Kahaluau shaft was one. So what are you guys doing right now? You're mixing that water with high-level water to achieve a better chloride level before it's delivered, is that?
Right, correct. I think, yeah, you have a pretty good understanding. And thank you guys for coming and checking it out, by the way. We appreciate it when you guys actually, you know, came and visited our facility. So yeah, that one, just a background for everybody, just a refresher, that was turned over to us by the state back in late seventies. And at that time, I think chloride levels were a little bit higher than desirable already. But we assumed control of that, and since then, it's been a challenge as well as other basal sources in the area. And lucky for us, the high-level sources were found. So we've been continually, over the past twenty, thirty years, trying to reduce our dependence on those sources and transfer the reliance more upon the high level. Part of the challenge was back then, and that was supposedly the water source for that area, the K2K plan. So the infrastructure was designed with the big stuff at the bottom and designed to boost up the hill, and that's what we were developing at the time. But with the challenges that we did see with the chlorides and the discovery of the high-level wells, we had to shift 180 and utilize high-level sources and bring that down the hill now. So all in all, we've invested over thirty mil in trying to address that challenge. We're still working on it. Currently, our latest effort- Currently, our latest effort, we spent close to twelve mil on a transmission line close to Palani Road, specifically to bring that high-level water down into the Kailua Town area and, you know, provide better quality water to the town. And we've seen immediate results, right? And along those lines, we've partnered with some private entities for another Maoka Makai corridor. We call it our Waiaha South Corridor, and that's more south of Palani. Same intent though, is to get that high-level water and bring it down to the Makai areas so we can improve the quality of water feeding the area and reduce our reliance on those basal sources.